Good afternoon, it's noon and we'll begin sixty minutes for me. If you all rise and go to the pledge and also.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How much longer we ask that you be with us this afternoon as we work through this city's business, pray your blessing on this community and those at work and live here. In the name of Jesus, we pray. I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Make the motion. Make the second, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Set some comments. Anyone wants? We're holding. I don't have either.
Thank you so much for this moment that you give me to speak to you, I just wanted a couple things, my concerns that I have.
There you go.
Got a problem, I hope so. Sometimes it comes and sometimes it goes. I know you're looking at the budget and that you have mentioned that you have prioritized, which is great. I just want to stress how important it is to the citizens that you keep your priorities as they are listed in the forethought of your budget. One of the items that I'm concerned, and I know I'm not, the only citizen concerned about it is, you know, if I have limited funds, I have a budget, and if my home needs repairs and I need fifty thousand dollars to do those repairs, I'm not a very good steward if I go spend those money on vacation for my family. I'm not taking care of the necessities of life first. And I'm referring to the north park. I love kids, I have worked with kids since I was a kid myself. And all through my adult life, I've worked with kids, mainly at the church, a lot at the school. However, when a family has need, the wants of a child have to sit on at birth for a while and you explain to them, you know, sometimes we have to wait for what we want. And I love that they have that part, but when you're talking three million dollars, the data that I heard at the last council meeting was eight hundred eighty thousand dollars going into a certain bucket to do, help deal with roads and with the park. And over a five-year term, with those dollars, we have four point four million dollars. And you want to spend three of that on a park? That means this one point four million dollars over a five-year period. And that the cost from what I heard was a million dollars per mile, we have less than a mile and a half we get to work on in five years. I know our water is a very big concern, that we have quality and quantity, and we have to address that. That three million dollars will go a long way towards helping with our water situation. Again, remember your priorities that you have and keeping them in line. And I'd love for the kids to have another point, I believe, but sometimes the budget just doesn't allow it for now. And we know as adults, oftentimes, we were told not now, it's time after late. And so I need something to look forward to, especially Christmas time.
Christmas is coming, right?
Yeah. Well, it comes once a year and then that way on the three sixty five, right? So again, I just ask you to remember the priorities and remember we have needs and necessities versus all ones. Thank you.
May I, I'm sorry, can you state your name and address?
Yes, I'm Linda Piesma, and I live at two oh one North Park.
Anyone else would like to speak? If not, I'm going to close, set some comments, thank you very much. I'll just mention that the money that we were talking about last meeting for streets is that it's going to be, it's a million dollars for five years that's separate to the park, the three million dollars for the park budget is not, don't conflate that with the streets, because that money is going to go for streets, a million dollars, we're going to spend it, a million dollars, basically with maintenance.
We're going to have a, we're going to die here.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that, don't conflate those two, because that's wasn't our intent. We'll move on. Ex parte statement here. At this time, I would give everybody a chance in the council to declare the conflicts and communication they've had, and how it inputs are really considered today's agenda items impartially. No, no, they move on. No appointments. Set agenda to look at, doing business, we'll start with new business and our city administrator, Craig Poset, moving fast from the front to the back.
Commenting when you walk into the podium. Auto made city council, wow, those new batteries put some new life into this thing. Okay, the annual health insurance renewal, and also a discussion about Freedom Claims Management, Inc. This is a little text heavy, my colleague Ryan may give me a hard time about it, but when we get into these technical things, we're going to get a little more wordy, so bear with me here. Please feel free to interrupt and ask questions. Also, I want to caveat with, I've got Hadley here with Freedom Claims Management, Inc. here too, I'm going to turn the mic over to him when I get done with my presentation, so he can fill any of the holes and help answer any questions that I may be unable to. So, annual costs with Blue Cross are increasing by fifteen percent for the next plan year. I want to say that's subsequent years of double-digit annual increases, and I know there's been increases in the years before that. This is now unique to us, this is an industry-wide issue, we don't have a lot of authority to negotiate these increases, we're a small employer. The big wigs, they've got a little more pull in Topeka than we do, which is where most of this decision-making takes place. So, we're going to anticipate year over year, these same types of issues which are happening in all the organizations. City staff recommends partnering with Freedom Claims Management, Inc. to help us administer our health insurance benefits at a cost savings. They administer what's called a high deductible plan with the health reimbursement arrangement, which reduces costs for the health insurance over time. They administer the benefit in tandem with Blue Cross, so the same benefits we've had in years prior. The cost savings is achieved by adopting a base plan umbrella, slash umbrella plan through the high deductible health reimbursement arrangement, where the base plan is assumed by the employees and includes the same Blue Cross benefits as in years prior. The umbrella plan is assumed by the employer, which would be the city, and includes the high deductible. With the base umbrella plan, the city would reimburse the provider for a portion of the medical expenses typically by covering part of the deductible. Until the member's claims reaches the deductible, the balance of these costs are paid by the city's medical expense reimbursement account. We've got a couple of links to connect as far as budgeting for that account, working with Matt and FCMI as far as how that would work, and Brooke Carroll, FCFO, of course. The base plan claims would be processed by FCMI after first being submitted to Blue Cross for claim discounting and review. The city employees save money through the premium gain and switching from an expensive low deductible plan to a more economical high deductible plan. The high deductible plan reduces costs of premiums. I highlighted this next system because, sentence, because this is really what the difference is. Most employees will never hit the deductible and instead of throwing that money away, it can be put into the medical expense reimbursement account. The money saved goes into this account and is used to offset the healthcare costs incurred by the employees. We would only pay for the actual medical services that are used. They also handle all of the administrative duties such as open enrollment, COBRA, on-call assistance with claims, et cetera. This is a big thing for us because we continue to have an organization that runs plenty lean, other cities of our size have much more staff than we do. Staff are expensive, we consider their salary plus the benefits, and this is an opportunity for us to contract out some of, a very small portion of our HR duty, administrative duties. Freedom Claims would handle some of that. One of the things I want to be sure to impart, that there are no real changes to the employees other than having to carry two insurance cards, deductibles and co-pays, those remain the same. Here is the estimated annual premium expense between four hundred six thousand and five hundred one thousand, contingent upon claims. You can see the employer's share would not exceed fifty six hundred, the employee's share would not exceed fifteen hundred. The city attorney was sent last week, they have not given us a final review on the contract, so we need to get that from them, I anticipate it later today. We've got two recommendations up here. We were directed that, by the, by the city council, that the city would encumber the totality of the increase in annual premiums. So, that's a consensus that we need from city council as a part of this afternoon's business as well. So, council, if you have any questions for me, Councilman Trailer Collins, if you guys have questions for me, I'd be glad to answer those, and I know Hadley could help too.
People might be previous.
Yep. Hadley, you want to come on up?
You bet.
Back team this with me. I'd add that I came across Freedom Claims in the role that I served prior, previous community, we had them for about three or four years. We were undergoing the same annual increase we had Blue Cross too. And I sent out an email on my city manager lister, which included all the city managers in the state of Kansas. And I told them, hey, our insurance is going up, it's been like thirty years in a row. You guys have any suggestions? What about it? No, what about United Health? You know, Blue Cross is a cream of the crop, and it's expensive. Those other companies that I mentioned, you know, you can go out and they can bet on the service, but if it's going to be any cheaper, you're going to get a lesser benefit. When I sent that email out to the lister, I had about six or seven of my city manager colleagues email me back, and they said, you need to call Freedom Claims, Inc. at a great bend. We've been using them for a few years and we've started to save a lot of money doing it. And so, that's what we did. And I think after three years of having that plan, we built up about fifty or sixty thousand dollars in our account, because instead of just throwing that money away, because most employees will never reach their deductible, we're able to save that money. And these guys only take a fee off the money you save, and I don't remember what the percentage is, but, so, this is one way where we can tighten our belt a little bit and try to save a little money. The health insurance benefit is one of our biggest annual liabilities that we have as far as anybody's concerned, so. You have questions about this slide, Councilman?
No, that was supposed to be the last one.
Okay. You want to explain the ranges a little bit, Hadley? Your ranges was in.
Yeah, so the, the difference between the four hundred thousand dollar number and the five hundred thousand dollar number specifically is how your claims run. So, on a very small scale, it is, it's self-funding on a very small scale. So, instead of your employees sitting at a five hundred dollar deductible that you're buying from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, instead you're going to go buy that high deductible health plan, let's say six thousand, and we call that the umbrella policy. So, they're still going to have a Blue Cross and Blue Shield card. So, you have same doctors, same network, everything with that Blue Cross. Then, the only difference that he explained is you're going to get a Freedom Claims insurance card as well. They go hand in hand, when you go to the doctor, you take both. But, probably ninety percent of your employees are not hitting that deductible, like he mentioned, so the other ten percent are, but you're going to use that savings between your four hundred and five thousand dollar number, those are those individuals that are not hitting that deductible number. So, we've ran some projections on what it can look like analytically, on how many you might have hitting that based on all the people that are on your health plan, and that's that range you're seeing right there. So, if nobody hit the plan, hit the deductible versus everybody did, we know neither of those two are going to be the case, and it's going to be somewhere in the middle.
Clear as mud?
Clear as mud, I figured that'd be coming out.
So, what does it change if we add staff?
Uh, it's, it's all on a percentage basis. Does not hurt you when you add staff, it'd be like just now if you're Blue Cross and Blue Shield direct, you're going to pay that additional premium for that added member. So, truthfully, the bigger your group is, the more you're probably going to save, because, you know, you're thinking eight to twelve percent are going to hit that deductible every year, so everybody else that you're adding to it statistically, only one out of every ten is going to hurt you, you know what I mean?
Councilman, we also have each year, Matt, we budget for the positions that we presumably think we might add for the 2025 budget, and we've got a couple officers and some health workers employees, but we also budget for if some of our employees may get married or have kids, et cetera, we also take that into account. So, that maybe addresses another side of the coin for the question that you have. I'll say, being in my role, especially in the smaller community than before, I very much still had to be involved in the health insurance discussion, et cetera. Here, you know, primarily that's administered by our HR director, Terry, who does a wonderful job, but the point I'm getting at is, is it took me a couple of years to fully understand the program that FCMI provides, and then the results kind of spoke for themselves, so if it's complicated to wrap your head around, don't feel like, you know, don't feel lesser. The health insurance is not, you know, a simple rudimentary thing to understand, you're going to need to see it, you know, time to time again to fully continue to grasp what it is that we're sharing, but we have to play stress as city staff, we're trying to keep the same level of benefit for our employees so we can continue to recruit retaining talent while also saving the organization some money. Partnering with FCMI is a strategy to do that. How many municipal clients do you guys have?
I think that number would be over sixty now, across the state.
When I started within, in my previous community, I think there were half that, so it's, it's working in other places, and I think that's always a good sign when you look at stepping outside the box and doing something like this.
I think we have about two hundred and fifteen groups in the state of Kansas, we do have surrounding groups, but that'd be just the state of Kansas, we're out of Great Bend.
We won't hold that interest.
I'm not from there at least. Somebody else said that last time too.
Then the other question about funding the full increase, the additional twenty-four thousand you guys have taken with that, that the city paid up for the staff this year.
Yeah.
Chris can do it for me, right?
Yeah.
Keaton will be, if he's here, if he's not, unfortunately I am, I guess the four of us are going to agree up to that, so.
I have my ringer on in case you'll be able to call in, but that was a telemarketer first line, sorry.
Is there anything else we need to do then?
Just the, there's two, two recommendations there, one is to execute the contract with FCMI pending final review, and then the second one is to approve the Blue Cross renewal. In some of these types of contracts, I put administrator or mayor, just depends on whose name they put on the signature line, is who will have to sign it, I'm not sure which is on there, but.
I want to make a motion to.
Make a motion, I'll propose a city administrator, mayor to execute the contract with FCMI, seen on exhibit A, attached, pending final legal review.
Second.
I'll read this motion for a second, so all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, I'll propose a city administrator, mayor to execute the Blue Cross renewal, seen by exhibit B, attached.
Second.
I'll read this motion, Chris, a second, so all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both motions are approved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I know we're on the sixty minutes version here, but there's a couple of other strategies like this I'm going to be bringing to you guys over the next few months or so. We're going to look at our liability insurance too, we know of some other groups out there that do that for lesser costs, you get the same, same level out of it, so these are things we kind of step into as we've got competing priorities for our time. So, with the fifteen percent increase this year in our health insurance, it made sense to get right into this. I wanted to wait a year just to kind of get settled in, you don't really want to do changes to the employee's health benefit when you just start, but it felt like it would have been the wrong move if we didn't move forward a little bit quicker just because of how much it was going to go up in one year, so thank you guys for working with us on this.
Does it cover the hair club for men or something?
It does not, but I do know a terrific hair, I'm going to say barber across the screen.
I think we just buy people cowboy hats and hats to take care of that.
Yeah.
Pretty ride along.
Yes, indeed. Good afternoon, mayor and council, very excited to make this presentation to you this afternoon. So, as you recall, earlier this year, city staff and city council met and drafted goals for this year being 2024, one of those being the creation of new monument-style entrance signs into the community. So, as you're also recalling, you approved an RFP earlier this summer for us, and which was solicited to collect bids for the design, construction, and installation of two monument entrance signs, and again, this meeting falling under the goal of goal three, going back to the year's plans of beautification of public spaces. We determined the original locations for these two initial monument signs, both being on one hundred sixty seventh, one at one hundred sixty seventh and Maple, and then one in US fifty-four, and one's in, and one at sixty-seven. So, the proposal deadline did pass, and we received bids from two different companies, both of them are represented in the room today, Luminous Neon as well as Miracle Signs, both great companies located here in the Wichita area that do signs all throughout the region and beyond. So, we received from Luminous Neon two design signs that we've labeled Design One and Design Two with the respective bids, and this is for both signs, as well as a single design for Miracle Sign with the bid there. And I will now go through what you see, so this is Design One from Luminous Neon, and I apologize for the scale, this is, this is the scale, it's a little blurry though even on this large screen. Again, these will be placed at those two intersections, this is non-illuminated, but this is a brushed aluminum. Design, you can see both the front, the side views, as well as the rear. This is Design Two, again, twenty-five feet tall, this one would be illuminated at night. And then we have the one designed from, from Miracle Signs. And as you get a perspective, this first one, this is of course a long, you guys did before, this is proposed to be a fifty, uh, fifty-four, twenty-five feet tall, so you get an idea of the scale there, this, there it is with an evening view. So, again, twenty-five feet tall, a small, a bit, a little bit of a smaller footprint. And then this is at Maple and one hundred sixty-seventh, with their proposal being that this one would be a bit shorter, at twelve feet tall. And so, upon review, city staff has, is recommending that we go with Design One from Luminous Neon, under the financial section, so again, going their total bid for install and construction, design, construction, and installation for the two signs being at seventy-four thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. City's fifty-eight cents, again, staff being cognizant of projects, especially that we're working with K dot Ridgeway, we are requesting a fifteen percent contingency, so that total is eleven thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. This is to cover any unforeseen expenses as noted here, so if we need to potentially acquire an easement, or an easement or any other type of land acquisition, those costs are already, costs are already built in. Once council does authorize this, there is a fifty percent down payment, so that would be paid now. Funding for these two signs, you can see here, is coming out of the general funds under capital outlight project discretionary fund. Down payment would definitely be made this year, and then based on permitting, construction hopefully can start this year, but if it has to go to 2025, those funds would roll over in order to pay for this project, there's no legal consideration at this point. So, again, the formal recommendation from city staff is to approve Luminous Neon's Design One with the bid amount there, along with the fifteen percent contingency, for a total spending authorization not to exceed eighty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. This would also authorize staff to execute the contract with the selected firm. Stand for any questions that you may have, but again, this project is definitely going to enhance two of our entryways on the east side of the community, people are going to know that you have left Wichita and you are now in the city of Goddard. So, these are going to be very, very excellent projects to enhance the aesthetic value of the community as well as, as well as pride for community members as well.
Can you go back to it?
Yeah. Go back to the view of it. Yeah, do that, which one?
Luminous Neon.
Oh, sorry. There's Design One, and then Design Two. And, and again, as noted, there's.
Is this a Luminous Neon?
Yes, so they submitted two, they submitted two different designs. And so, again, going back to the staff report, one of the reasons why we did recommend, as well as being a little bit, but not just because of that, was the reason why I went with this design is to, say in the future, say three or five years from now, we want to change the city logo, then we need to change this, as well as it is shown on this one as well, the city logo. So, for perpetuity, again, our recommendation is going with this one, it does, it is a cleaner look, we felt that this would be very, a good visual aesthetic welcoming residents and visitors to the community, and not having to worry about if we do change the logo at some point in the future, having to go through a sign official.
Are you going to have a light on the ground at times that?
Yes, staff has talked internally, yes, that we would somehow, from the base, illuminate this, or with some kind of floodlight, but again, that'd be a separate project, perhaps to be handled internally by city staff.
What is that made of?
Brush aluminum.
Part of that contingency cost that Ryan has built in there could be to fund serving and power to get that light, but I think the laid acquisition will be part of that too.
Just want to make sure that we're covered in terms of the base.
So, is it painted or what, I mean, what's the longevity of the appearance?
I would invite Megan from Luminous Neon to address the council that perhaps can answer that question better than I can. Thank you.
Hi, Megan Shaffer from Luminous Neon. This is going to be fabricated out of aluminum, bone right now on the sides, and when they finish aluminum on the base, it would be equivalent to a carving job, so it's, we usually have it a little high quality, and we have signs that we've painted over the last seven to ten years of working, refurbished, depending on the conditions, if it's being watered, that's a whole different story, but they've got a five-year warranty offered to cover this one, so, as far as like materials, et cetera, and I can say that there's some explosions like if it's natural, like from paint, I mean, from a thing watered, just things like that, that's kind of exploded, but, so, five-year warranty. And I think he did speak about wind load, he wanted to know the wind load, that's a hundred fifteen, a hundred and fifteen miles per hour was the wind load.
That's just cool where you're running out from.
You can't go less than that, maybe, so, you probably are in a bit. And the, the word, the Goddard is actually dimensionable, their flat cutouts are not.
So, this is for two? And they're both the same size?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
You know, just, you know, keeping it simple, I think, if you put the logo on it and that changes, then a lot of things, like something like that's, it's clean, it's, it's simple and.
You can add the option to it in the future, and have some kind of flat cutout and coffee on the back, or the logo on the back, you know, if you don't want it to be.
I kind of envision that.
We didn't add anything to it right now.
I kind of envision that Maple Street one, you know, doing a little landscaping around it, some flowers or some zero scape, maybe some landscape brick or whatever.
Maybe some rocks, so they don't have to be watered.
Yes.
That's what I'm thinking about too, like the base of it, I mean, doing a bolt over that way, because. That's what I'm thinking about too, like the base of it, I mean, doing a bolo that way because mowers go bad and the chilis. You know, just keep them, the aesthetics of it diverse as possible.
That's a great point.
And up to that point, there is a moped right now, like I did.
We've got a, a community partner that has these massive stones. I think you could see some of them have been dedicated to Linear Park. There's been some conversations about perhaps utilizing those on the perimeter, so we can keep the, you know, one of these is in a farmer's field, two of them are nearby farmer's fields, so you're gonna have combines and discs and implements and stuff like that that can go by them. And we don't want to have any damage done to the sign, so some different things like that, we definitely would want to put around it. I think this is going to drastically improve the aesthetic of the Kellogg corridor. I think we can all be honest with ourselves and say right now, it does not look good. We've got the overhead lines up and down, you know, which someday it'd be nice to get those buried. You know, we've got some other aesthetic issues. This is a small step to kind of improve that and also build our sense of community.
Any other questions? I guess we're pending the motion here. Reclamation, so there's actions. There we go. I'll attend to motion to approve this.
I'll make the motion to approve the Luminous Neon design. Does I know it?
Oh, why not?
I make the motion to approve the Luminous Neon sign, Design One, with a bid of $74,324.58 and allow the 50% contingency of $11,148.69 to cover potential additional project costs. City is authorized to execute contract with Luminous Neon with a total budgetary spending authorization not to exceed $85,473.27.
I'll second that. I'll say, motion kept. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys making it fast enough.
Yeah, this, this is a, I think Ryan mentioned once before, this is a part of our annual goals for 2024. We're gonna do an update on where we're at on those goals, probably in October, maybe second meeting in September. We're churning through them, but there's still a few to go.
All right, we're gonna have a breakdown of the five-year program based on our updated anticipation for vote approval. The council has closed the program to fund five million street projects over five years. The street fund currently commits $250,000 per year for maintenance projects. That's funded with a portion of the county sales tax. 2025, potential mill levy increase to the cap in six mills. Six mills will provide an additional $462,000 in project funding in 2025 for a total funding amount of $711,000. Additional funding will be required to fund a total of five million projects in five years. Property taxes from assessed valuation growth will help with some of that, but again, we're anticipating our assessed valuation growth to go towards our, most of that is to continue to go towards our, you know, general fund operations. So only a portion of that that's been reserved for, for street projects will be able to take that valuation growth, put it towards street projects. We're also planning to increase the transfer from the general fund, which is that sales tax-funded revenue, by $25,000 a year, every year of the five years of the project. So by 2029, that final year of that project, it would be a total of $350,000, up from $100,000 going through there from general, from sales tax proceeds. We're also going to be proposing another two-mill increase in '26, and another two-mill increase in '27 to get us to that $5 million, $5 million. This is just a quick and dirty budget for what that might look like. That top line there is the project fund balance, so, you know, at $25,000, we're trying to do $5 million in projects. That first year, it would be paid for with the, you know, $250,000 from the street maintenance budget that's already in the budget, plus that $462,000, that is where those six mills are going to go towards to do that. So the first year, we would basically have $714,000 available for projects. The second year, we're gonna adjust, we're gonna do an inflationary adjustment of 4% to that project budget, so let's assume we spent down that $714,000 the first year. You know, we're gonna put in another 4% into the project budget to take care of inflationary costs. And then we would, you know, like I said, increase that transfer from the general fund to the street fund by $25,000. And then that $656,425, that anticipates another two-mill increase for the 2026 budget year. Another two-mill increase in 2027, plus another $25,000 transferred from the general fund. And by the time we get to 2029, you see that we're funding a total of, just for inflation, 5.4 million in street projects with the proposed additions down. Again, you can't, again, you can't adopt more mill levy for future years tonight. That's, you know, you have to do that in the coming years. But this projection to get there with what we're adopting, if we adopt the full signature, this is the quickest way to get there. If we're, and this is, you know, allows you basically to, well, it's not first again, assuming a four-million, a 4% annual inflationary adjustment, which could be high, could be low, we don't know. Inflation has, the rate of inflation has been reduced from where it was a couple of years ago, but it's still higher than historical. And this allows for other city operations to remain fully funded with the other normal property tax revenue. I was pointing out legally, property tax increases are required to be approved through the normal budget adoption process. So again, the best, the most you can do this year is adopt up to six mills in additional mill levy for street programs only. Again, this is specifically for streets only. This is not included money for park, North Park would be funded by other sources. So if you have any questions?
Mayor, I would just make a note, this, as Matt shared, anticipates a two-mill net new increase in both '26 and '27. Assuming everyone stays on, we'll have a majority of the same council seated for both those budget years, so it should make it a little more likely that we could stick to this plan that's being proposed.
I think our citizens are wanting to see us trim the fat. That's what I call it. I mean, we need to be trying to figure out how not to increase and what we need to do to save money.
Yeah.
To make things happen for the citizens that pay the taxes, which pays your salaries.
Yes. That's a valuable perspective, and you know, you've been on the council for many years, Councilman Trailer, so you've heard the old adage that this city runs lean. I'd argue it continues to do so. I think when you look at where, what we-
I remember when I first came on city council, six years ago, we used to buy used cop cars. Now we're buying an $80,000 Tahoe. What can we do to trim the fat a little bit?
So I don't, I don't know that we want to get into intense detail on our vehicle replacement program, but the theory is that by buying new and staying on a schedule, you're being more cost efficient because you're not having to pay for breakdowns and things of that nature. You're getting value on your trade-ins.
Mayor, didn't you tell me about a lease program on vehicles?
Well, this is a general, we just had a general discussion of possibility of it at one year or the next. It's kind of a one-off. There's advantages and disadvantages of leasing. It's kind of interesting when I go home and talk to my wife, she goes, "You said you should never lease a vehicle. What are you talking about the city leasing a vehicle for?" So I get criticized at home for things I say after too.
So do I.
But in general, I think the best practice would be to buy something if you have the money. On a one-year situation, if we were to lease a couple of vehicles, and then with the growth that we have in our evaluation, plus the growth of the city, we'd be paying for that vehicle over five years. I mean, so you increase the cost too. So I mean, it's, it's an option that's available, but I think the staff has feelings about doing that. I'm conflicted. I feel strongly both ways, so.
Councilman Trailer, we would love to sit down with you and go over the budget in intimate detail. I mean, there is lots in there, and certainly more than we can unpack in our workshops and during our hearings and things of that nature. And it's a challenge every single year. I think that you have a better insight than most because you've been here for eight years, I think now, and so you know. Six years? Well, when it's all said and done, I think it would have been eight, but our mill levy has always been the lowest. And I think that, you know, you can see the product that we've been able to put out there with that mill levy. We can provide a higher quality of life for our citizens if we are willing to assess a little bit closer to the mill levy of our peer communities. It's, it's really a tough challenge to thread the needle on some of this stuff because as we grow, so too do our needs, and so too do the service, the services that we must provide our citizens. More positions, more vehicles, facilities, all that stuff.
I just remember little old grandma coming in and saying, "I can't afford my water bill." I remember her saying that a couple of years ago.
Before my time.
Yeah.
And we empathize with those concerns, and I can always guarantee that we do due diligence when we talk about touching on it with wallets. We've, we've actually got criticized for comparing ourselves to the other places nearby. Well, what's that matter? Well, I think there's some context that needs to be placed in the discussion that, whether it's water bills or property taxes, that, you know, the services we provide are going to reflect that. And we need to make sure that we're being responsible, and I hope that you guys see the level of effort that's put into the budgetary process on an annual basis. If there are areas, if you have some specific things that you want us to look closer at, we've still got time. We have till October 1st to certify the budget. If there's something specific, or if you want to take the fine tooth comb to the whole thing, staff would love to sit down with you one-on-one and go through it.
No, I think there were some things that I had mentioned at the previous meeting. I mean, if we, I mean, alternatives to moving, you know, funds for street maintenance, I mean, one would be to even defer for a year the vehicle purchases for 2025. There's, you know, the potential to maybe peel off 1% off of some of the reserve accounts, pick up $70,000. We're talking about adding, you know, four staff people, maybe instead of adding four staff people, we only have three. I mean, there are some things I think we still can consider that I brought up before, so. I guess the thing that's kind of surprised me is that the treaty went so fast from water to the budget, to now they're on to the trash discussion, that maybe it's like old news already, so. But I think, I mean, those are things we still have to kind of weigh out and. I mean, we, you know, the one thing with the water is everybody said, well, you know, can you do that in steps? This mill levy increase that we're, you know, where we started at 10, you know, we moved to 6. You know, 6, 4, 4, or we could do, you know, 5, 3, 2. I mean, the process of stepping into it, I think is a factor that we can consider too. You know, the county did lower their mill levy by one, so 6 increase on our end would be a net 5. I don't think the school district has announced what they're doing yet, but. I mean, those are, I think, there's, there's some things that could be adjusted, you know, in terms of our priorities and what we do for this year, the lower from 6. But I think I still want to fund, you know, the streets and get moving on that. We've got a good start. So, Chris, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, this is based off of if we, if we continue on in the, in this A and F. Next year, we raise the levy too, and then the year after, we raise that again.
As you go around the ring around Wichita, like, you know, those other communities are looking at things, and there's going to be, you know, increases in other places too. I mean, it's not like everybody's going to freeze and we move.
Man, I try not to push back when I hear the comments of typing the bell, but I already see how tight the bell is. I mean, when you're already the cheapest, and I don't like the word cheap, I think that's a negative connotation, but how do you get cheaper from where you're already at, when you're already the cheapest, when you compare yourselves to the other communities? And at some point, it comes down to what quality of life would we like to be able to provide in our community? If you, if you want things like senior programming, a robust chamber, monument signs, wayfinding signs, a nice community-centered parks, but you gotta be willing to pay for that stuff. And I think we're doing a lot in a short amount of time because in the past, we haven't been willing to pay to have the quality of life that we now maybe desire. So these are tough conversations we're gonna have every year, and the priorities are gonna change a little bit, but you're not gonna be able to move anywhere else and get it, get it any cheaper.
That's what the hardest part about this job is. You know, you have to weigh being proactive or reactive. A lot of things, the reason why we take it out of the rough, because we're into reacting, it's a catastrophe. That'd be way more expensive. So being proactive and taking care of these things. As far as the vehicle thing, they call it lease a lease for a reason. You know, there's so many stipulations behind that, you know, that you caution a lot more than just buying a vehicle. You know, so the street maintenance, I mean, we already discovered that the roads weren't built correctly in the first place. So we have to be proactive in making sure we build, like you mentioned earlier, Mayor. You know, we're gonna build it, the quality up. You don't, you know, you build quality into a product, you don't, you can't just expect quality to be there and pay a cheap price for it.
Well, I guess, we do have a real nice park over here, so I guess we need to figure out, maybe we should put our North Park on hold. And concentrate on the other things.
I've got some perspective on that conversation too, and it's that, that those are siloed issues. You got, right now, it's more recently being compared to, to Water, which is an enterprise fund that's independent. Whereas the North Park, which we have been planning for over five years now, it's not, you know, it's not instant gratification. This has been a long time in the works. But that's funded by other sources of revenue such as property and sales tax, of which we have been saving over years in preparation for this point. So, you know, if that's the decision, we'll, we'll work at the will of the governing body as we're assigned to do, but I would argue that we bought the land for the park, I think, over five years ago. We've now encumbered about nine months of planning, probably another three to four to go. At what point is it time to build a park? We don't have any amenities north of Kellogg, which is a physical division divider in our community. I've heard from some of our stakeholders that, you know, their child went K through 12 living on the north side of Kellogg, and they could never just get on a bike and go enjoy a park or a pool or anything of that nature. If there were a park up there or some kind of amenity, their child, you know, would have been able to enjoy that. All of this stuff is linked together, and it's tough to pick what's more important and when you do it, but you know, at some point, maybe time to build it.
Well, there's just, you know, I do, there's, there's people that are, that favor the park, and then there's just an equal amount that don't favor it, you know? But I'm a, me personally, when you start a project and get- But I'm, I'm a, me personally, we start a project, you have to, you know, you don't waste resources in years of, just my opinion, years of planning and money spent to just stop at the, at the, at the home stretch. You got to run through there and get completed. People have been there, I've, I've seen when we did the Ford Park Open House, there's a lot of enthusiasm. There's people who are just waiting for that. And, you know, just for instance like that too, it's not, uh, just, it's been planned out, it's been budgeted, that's, that's my feeling on it. Just completing a project that we begin and we start, you have to see the progression.
Well, I guess the other thing I would add is that, I know, I don't mean the one part, I mean, but one of the things that was said is that the first phase could be set up in two or three steps too, so it might not, we might need, maybe to do to start the thing as part of going down the path of the plan instead of doing three million dollars, maybe it's a million, then five, whatever. How we carve up the five, but I saved an old file cabinet my father-in-law had, a one bumper sticker. And that bumper sticker, I might get my sawzall and cut it out, I'll bring it in. It says, it says, "Start, the rest is easy." So I think if, starting the park, we can, we can start down that path and it doesn't necessarily interfere with what we're doing with water because the, the water situation should pay for itself from the proceeds of the water and the sewer treatment funds that we generate. It's just a matter, I think sometimes of how big a step you take in terms of the first step. I just think it looks nice that the metal fence is down out there and the trees have been-
Boy, it does look nice.
It looks, you can actually see the, let me see the property and the land.
You can go over there and play brizzy.
Well, when you see progress happening, that, that, you know, we're, we're paying the, you got to pay the piper, then, you know, maybe when things get a little bit better and everything's put together, then you ease off a little bit, you know, but to get those aesthetic things up that people have been looking for for years and, and we've been talking about for a long time, you know, get those fruition, that's satisfying when you see it done, you know, from our, our prospect, our, from our eyes and then from the citizens as well, you know? So, I just say we need to do what we say we're going to do. And I agree, I mean, through the ways we can cut back, absolutely, Krista.
It's not so much cutting back, it's just-
Yeah, not just the long-
It's, but taking, you know, the initial step. You know, you have the basement to the main floor, you have ten stairs, you know? People sometimes want to go from first floor to second floor or whatever and just one big step. And whether you're operating your business or running the city, I think it, you know, even people with the water say, "Can't you step into this?" Water's a totally different situation. Krista, you want to hear some thoughts?
I just, I think some aspects of this whole thing are fast and furious and what, what, what needs to be fast and furious, in my opinion, is the water situation. We need, we need to take care of that. And I do think that, that we can do the park, but we can do it in, in, um, in a process, in a step. I mean, I, I know that people have been desperately wanting, wanting this for a long time and it's been five years in the works. I just, I think that there are other things in our, in our city that say precedence over doing it all right now. I think we do what we need to do to make sure that we can enjoy the park later on down the line. You know, take care of the infrastructure and those things so that the park doesn't look like it's a whole piece of crap at the end, you know, because we don't have everything else in place.
Sure.
We've, we've seen some real negative results of trying to deliver government service as cheaply as possible and some of it in some areas that are supposed to be securing our health and welfare. I mean, we, even our wastewater plant, I mean, we start, it's built, it's about half its capacity right now, but we started stripping things out of it when we saw the number X amount of years ago and what happened? Over time, we had to go buy all those things anyway and they got a lot more expensive. You look at some other areas where we wanted to be cheap and we're facing the consequences of that. On the park, I will say, it is broken out into at least three phases. The first phase could be a phase one A, phase one B sort of thing. Our goal is to have it all built out in a matter of ten years, but it may take twenty, you know? And we, we've got a source of revenue that we've been stalling away. We also plan to borrow, so, you know, servicing the debt on that borrowing is going to make it a little easier on the rest of the operations. Not like there's going to be some huge mill levy increase or something to pay for the park, that is not the case. And I, I want to continue to just reinform people that some of these things are siloed and the, we have fund account budgeting and it's not, it's not like all of this money is together and you, you know, just because you did this, you couldn't do that. These things are separate. Specifically, water and sewer, those are enterprise funds that operate very closely to a business, almost independent of the rest of the city budget, so to speak.
That's a good point. So if you stop the, the park, they don't necessarily make the water thing happen faster or cheaper.
It does nothing for water at all. Maybe staff time would be the, the impact, you know, where we spend our time. And I can, I, I would follow up with one of Councilwoman's comments. We have been feverishly at a sprint addressing water for at least the last year. We have made huge strides and, and it's been a lot of little things that have added up to some big things in securing our community's water future. And I feel more confident about it today than I have in a long time. The water rates and the rural water district contract being the two champions, getting our perfection period reopened at the state, I mean, the water is going to be taken care of as long as we stay on the same path.
And we got those well numbers for our citizens yet?
We need well numbers.
You're going to get some bids for wells for our citizens?
Yes, I've talked to well companies and I will let you know how that has gone. They're not as excitable as one might think, but I'll, I'll let you know where we're at.
No, just not to alarm anyone, but I think I was told earlier today that, was it well number?
We're going to talk about that in the, added report.
Well, we're running out of time too, but-
Sorry to interrupt, Matt. Go ahead.
You got two minutes.
No, actually I have a minute, it's created some minutes.
One minute.
No, that's just a good answer.
We don't need any action on this, just updating the plan for the street project, knowing the, and just the gap on what the mill levy will be this year. So that's all there's left, I don't need any action there.
The amount, just one quick question. The amount of money that's kind of like in the street reserve fund, approximately how much is?
We don't have a street reserve fund, we have a capital improvement fund. There is a, there's, there are large fund balances that are now, we give most of that is reserved for, you know, for all the projects, because of the tech costs. I'm currently working on giving you a, whatever your actual number is, but I'm, my, my moving guess is that after we do the transfer in for this year fund general fund, it'll be between one point five and two million in, you know, cash that we have essentially, the sales tax proceeds that we have not spent.
Okay.
We spent some, I don't remember if we're not.
Sure. Thank you. Five seconds, fifty-six.
I'm, well, Mayor and Council, I apologize, I've talked way too much during this new meeting and I, I got a little bit more to go here. The ad hoc water committee met last evening to discuss the four points. Amongst these four points, the committee will also receive presentations from the industry stakeholders. The monthly meetings of the committee will be open to the public and held on the fourth Monday of each month excluding December. They will be at seven PM, location City Hall. Please follow the link to kind of track our progress on this issue. There's a lot of helpful information there. That's at the water rate increase landing page under the transparency tab. Facilities assessment proposal, that's coming Tuesday, September third from Hutton. Update on our roadway project, Second Street base asphalt has been complete. The grading crew is actively working on cutting the ditches. Surface asphalt on Second Street, the week of Tuesday, September third. Excavation on First Street between Main and Walnut will commence on the third as well. North Frontage Road Phase Two is going well, I believe it is on schedule. They've got a section of that Ford already with more to come. Linear park lighting projects, Evergy sent us an update. They received our payment. They are working with their facility to get all the materials together. I hope to be able to put out at least a few days' notice before we start seeing directional boring over there in the power installation and then subsequently the lights. The SCADA system, I kind of breezed over this in my last administrator's report, I'm not going to read through it, but please take some time to go through this paragraph. This is a huge expense that we're going to be encumbering this year and next for our SCADA system and so I, I want you guys to be well in tune with what's going on there. We will be asking for your authorization to begin advertising the request for proposals at the next council meeting, the third. Turn lanes, no real update there. Starting to get worried that October may become unlikely, so hopefully we can get another update from Caden on where they're at with that. I'd like to get that project going as soon as possible. It'd be nice to get back to some sort of equilibrium on fifty-four between one ninety-ninth and one sixty-seventh and we need to get that project out of the way.
What about before we stop, one eighty-third and Maple?
I don't have any update on that. I can check in with them. It's, on that one, Councilman Trailer, it's going to be very similar to the one they just did on the Pawnee Corridor. They're going to want traffic in engineering study. I mean, it's not going to be something that we get done in a matter of weeks or months. We're talking probably years. They won't just go put in a stop, stop sign. I mean, they, they want to have very specific data and they're held to state law, a law that I don't really like, to allow them to make those changes. So they're going to have to initiate a traffic study and then that study's going to have to put forward data that supports the change.
I think maybe we, do we put an officer there directing that? Once this light is closed, this twenty-third and hell off?
Whenever that project-
How many times?
Whenever that project starts, we will want to work with our police department on enhancing our presence.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but I'll give a chief and we'll, we'll hash it out. Good points, thank you for bringing those up. Senior meals, we are still working towards an October 1st startup. We'd like to do a ribbon cutting as a part of that. I think this is the first meals program in fifteen years to be initiated in this area, so we're really excited about that. I will thank all the folks involved because there's too many, but very pleased with where that's headed. Brooke Rannenberg will be presenting the linear park playground addition next meeting. CDPA is designing the cross connection for our water districts. Here is the remaining calendar on budgets. Tuesday, September third, we'll have the revenue to rate and the regular budget hearings. If you choose, you can adopt the budget that night and then we can send it off to be certified. If we want to continue to massage it, we've got a couple of meetings left before the October first deadline. I feel like we're close enough now where we could probably adopt it. What if we want to have more good discussion like we did today, that's an option as well. Like the SCADA, please pay special attention to the Goddard North Park deal. There's been a lot of work going on with this behind the scenes. Please check it out, go to the link to see the story map too, to see where we're at. We will have a presentation to council on, in November to kind of get through the next steps of that process. Wayfinding signage, the bids are due this Friday, the bid opening will be next Tuesday. City staff will deliver a recommendation of the governing body during the September sixteen council meeting. The Goddard Park master plan, that's needed for the North Park grants, that'll be presented during the September third council meeting. Here's a list of future agenda items. What I did not add in there was the annual goals review. We need to go over the goals, check on those, so you guys see where we're at on the annual goals and the progress. Mayor foreshadowed this a bit, but we had another emergency well repair to the tune of thirty-five thousand, six hundred twenty dollars for well number five. Qualifies as an emergency expenditure. Fortunately, the capital improvement fund is sufficient fund balance to build the cost. I would say if the water utility was funded appropriately, this was coming out of the water reserve instead of the general capital improvement fund. Well, seven is still offline as well and I expect a similar price tag to get it back and running. So we've probably had over six figures when this is all said and done of unbudgeted emergency well repairs, which is a reason why we are working so diligently on addressing issues with our water utility. One last thing, we, G-Works, which is our, is our payment processing for utility billing, there's been some changes to the fees with that. The credit and debit card processing fee, there's a two point four nine percent, plus one dollar per transaction. On ACH and checks, it's a dollar thirty per transaction. On account updating, to update the accounts, it's, and these are all fees that are charged by the software company, not ones that we just came up with because we felt like it. These are charged by G-Works. Account updated, five dollars per month, account update fees, seventy cents per update. If you have questions about this, my colleagues will help you answer too, by the way. Some additional fees that they charge, there's a chargeback fees of twenty-five dollars per chargeback, a retrieval request fee of twenty-five dollars per request, arbitration case fee of fifty dollars per case, e-check return fee of ten dollars per return, e-check refund fee of one dollar per refund, and a merchant dispersment failure fee of twenty-five dollars per failure. So just wanted to let you guys know that and we are communicating that to our citizens as well, that that's coming to effect. Any questions about those fees, how that works? You know, there's a reason when you go to New York City or Chicago, Visa has a huge sign on top of a hundred-story building. They collect fees every single time the card is swiped, so, and those are passed along to the customers. Thank you.
Appreciate it, Matt.
Appreciate it, Matt.
Any quick comments? I just want to thank the members of the water ad hoc committee, I know Linda's here today, but Naomi Leonard, Natalie, Tim Bush, we've got two Joshes on there, Josh Blanding and Josh McFadden, Jeffrey Jones and I think Randy Renaud has agreed to be the ad hoc chair, so I just wanted to thank them again for their service and working on, they will be working feverishly as well to, to figure out the water situation, so I'm happy that they've been willing to serve in that capacity. Without that, any other questions or comments? I'll close the meeting. Need a motion? Fred makes some motions. Everybody's second, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We can close, adjourn. See you, the two of you, the first Tuesday and September.